Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:03 and I'm calling this meeting of the Village of Tuxedo Park Board of Trustees to order. And we will all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the role? You're on mute, Elizabeth.
Sorry about that. I should know better. Mayor Citron?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Casker?
Present.
Trustee Brook?
Present.
Trustee Sherah?
Participating remotely.
And trustee Shaw? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, both in person and on Zoom. I'd like to start off this meeting by congratulating the deputy mayor, who has been elected overwhelmingly to the town council.
Thank you.
I believe he will take office sometime after the first of January.
Yes.
And he will be sorely missed on this, on this board. He has provided insight and intelligence and moderating influence for the rest of us. And we thank you for your service and we look forward to at least one more meeting, right?
That's right. Me too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With respect to the mayor's comments, before I begin the comments, I want to note one agenda change. The last item on the agenda is a reference to a pocket park off East Lake Road. That agenda item was added last Thursday and one of the abutting landowners, Mr. Sean Madden, prepared and sent to the board and to myself a rather lengthy memo of law with respect to his objections to the creation of a park or trail or whatever you would like to call it. That letter has been forwarded to the village attorney Jared Cashow. And upon his request, we are tabling that issue for tonight to allow him to study the letter, the citations Mr. Madden made in that letter, the points of law Mr. Madden made in that letter, so that he may respond accordingly. So there will be no presentation with respect to item G. And we will, we will pick that up at some time in the future for those of you that are waiting to comment on that particular point. Now, I'd like to go over some items that are not on the agenda just to report to you as to what I've been doing together with the Board of Trustees. I'd like to point out that Michelle Lindsay, town council member, is here tonight. She has been appointed as Chair of the Police Chief Search Committee. And in that capacity, she held an organizational meeting a week ago where the committee, which includes trustee Brook, trustee Casker, and the PBA President Sutherland began the discussion of the search for a new police chief to replace the honorable and well-respected David Conklin. With respect to that meeting, Elizabeth, the clerk, and I had the opportunity prior to that meeting to go up to Goshen to meet with the Civil Service Department of Orange County for the purpose of receiving a tutorial on how we go about searching for a police chief and follow the rules of civil service with respect to selecting the police chief. The second item I'd like to discuss is the Communications Committee, which is chaired by Jedidiah Turner. That committee has the responsibility for improving cell service here in the village, a very important topic. And I'd like to report that Mr. Turner and I met with a representative of a cable company several weekends ago. We did a drive around to the village, looking at various locations where a tower could be put. And in the end, the representative from the cell tower company recommended that rather than a large tower in the vicinity of Pawtucket, we might want to consider mini cells attached to various utility poles along the lake and in other areas of the village. In order to properly set up a plan for mini cells, we would have to do what the, what the consultant referred to as an RF survey, a radio frequency survey. That can be done either topographically on a computer or by a drive around. We're also going to meet with a second cell tower company, which you may have heard of Crown Castle. They operate the large tower by what was formerly the Red Apple Rest. And we'll get an opinion from them whether mini cells would be more appropriate than a large cell tower. And that meeting should take place relatively shortly. With respect to the village finances, I had the opportunity last week to meet with our accountants, Arius Cooper, in their Goshen office. We discussed the annual financial report, which I've been advised will be completed by the end of the year or early next year, at which point a representative from Arius Cooper will make a presentation to the board with respect to the village's financial situation. With respect to infrastructure, we have installed a convex mirror at the blind curve on Crow's Nest Road in response to a request from a resident. And thanks to the recommendation by Tate Sync at the last meeting, we have ordered and will install a second convex mirror on the curve at East Lake Road as it descends down towards South Gate, another blind curve. In my capacity as mayor, I've had the chance to meet with the chairman and the manager of the Tuxedo Club, Headmaster Johnson of the Tuxedo Park School, and Superintendent White of the Tuxedo Union Free School District. And we have discussed mutual concerns and I will be in touch with them again in the near future. Finally, with respect to the proposed landscaper and tree cutter licensing agreement, which is not on the agenda tonight, we have a meeting of stakeholders, including tree advisory board members, lakes committee members scheduled for Sunday, at which point those learned people will suggest prohibitions we would include in a landscaper agreement, which would prohibit them from engaging in certain activities or their licenses would be subject to revocation. Those activities could be cutting an excess number of trees, using phosphate fertilizer. We could certainly regulate the hours that leaf blowers can be used and any other suggestions, which will then be proposed to the board and incorporated upon board approval to any licensing agreement, which would probably go into effect sometime next year. So with that being said, I will sit down and we will start with public comment. First, anyone in the room who wishes to speak, the rules are the same. Every meeting, you have three minutes to discuss any item you wish, which is relevant to the operation of the village. In terms of the discussion, we would like you to respect the rules of decorum, no personal tax, no invectives. And at this particular point, I will open the floor. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak publicly in the room about any items of concern? Yes, ma'am. Please step to the microphone, state your name, and feel free to tell us what's on your mind.
Sorry, before I read, I just have a question to see if this is the appropriate venue. I know you said that the, the proposal for the park is being tabled until the village attorney has a chance to look over Mr. Madden's letter.
Yes.
But I have a letter from Kristen Ailey Brunner that they would like to have read into the public record for consideration as well.
That's fine, ma'am. Certainly.
Okay, so.
Would you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Paula Giblin. I live at 34 Tower Hill Road East. And I'm reading this letter on behalf of Kristen Ailey Brunner, who cannot be here this evening.
Please proceed.
So they write, "In your recent update, I invite you along with the this is only with 134 East Lake Road to express our complete opposition regarding the proposed use of the small, noncompliant lot accessed via the village utility road that abuts our property and shares the entrance of our driveway where we access East Lake Road. This matter directly impacts our property and that of our neighbors. In your recent mayor's update, you ended by expressing your commitment to work across the aisle for the government of our community. However, I feel compelled to point out a discrepancy between this formidable intention and the actions currently being pursued regarding the lot in question. The decision to use this small, nonconforming piece of land, which is very steep, was never intended for the purpose you propose, appears to have significant access and compliance issues. It seems to be in contrast with the sphere of cooperation and community welfare that you advocated for. This action appears to be not only impractical, but potentially motivated by factors unrelated to the best interests of our village. Not that the proposal should even be considered, but the increase in foot traffic down the utility road is something that should be studied carefully for its impact to neighboring property's privacy and also resident's safety, especially seasonally when snow and ice build up or heavy rains make the utility road potentially hazardous and potentially impassable. As a concerned citizen and directly affected party, I urge you to reconsider this decision. It is essential that our leadership's actions reflect a genuine commitment to the welfare of all residents, irrespective of their political affiliations or past voting decisions. I believe in the power of constructive dialogue and I hope you do too. For reference, and he puts his cellphone here for you, if you would like to discuss this issue. I would appreciate being copied on any emails that Mr. Guazzioni or others send regarding this issue and proposal, especially when they affect me and my family directly. Questioning my character and motivations publicly without cissing me seems particularly nasty and unnecessary. I am also willing to collaborate on finding more suitable and compliant alternatives that benefit our community as a whole. For example, maybe we could install benches at the public boat dock, which is just a few hundred yards away. I thought ladder sections of land bordering the lake near the end of East Lake Road might also be available. If so, it would appear to certainly be more spacious, safer, and hence a more suitable option. Thank you for your time and attention to this manner of matter. I look forward to your response and hope we can work together towards a resolution that aligns with the true spirit of Tuxedo Park. Sincerely, Chris and Ailee Brunner."
Thank you, Ms. Giblin. I'd just like to note for the record that I did respond to a letter very similar to that that Mr. Brunner sent to me last week. I'm not going to go into my response, but there was a response and I will, of course, follow up with him. And I gave him my phone number to, to talk or to meet at the property. Thank you very much.
On a personal note, I'd just like to add that Kristen Ailee Brunner have been longstanding members of the Tuxedo Park community. And any public accusations of elitism on the part of them in terms of why they would be opposed to the park is really uncalled for and not appropriate for public emails to be circulated making those accusations.
Well, I certainly did not make that accusation, but I did respond in whole or in part to the, to the initial letter. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Mayor, it's Josh. Before you go on, just, I want the trustees to be aware, when you're shuffling papers around by the mics, it makes it very difficult for people on the phone to hear. So I just be aware when you're, you're doing that.
Thank you, trustee Sherah. Anyone else in the room have any comments they'd like to make? Yes, council member Lindsay.
Lindsay, Eagle Mountain Road. This is relevant not to operation of the village, but definitely important for the village. Last night, the town board completed a series of workshops that focused on the revitalization of the downtown Hamlet Business District along Route 17. With that now completed, we will be preparing a request for proposal for firms to develop a master plan for the business district from East Lake Village Road all the way down to Schoolhouse Road. And with a master plan, we will hold more meetings to get more public input and revise the plan until we are ready to submit proposal of, or grant proposal, I should say, for New York Board, which is a program funded by New York State that has been giving money for downtown revitalizations. To date, they have awarded nearly a billion dollars to ninety communities. Recently, Cornwall was awarded four and a half million or ten million. So the money is out there, but we have to have a plan and that's been the focus of these meetings and.
And hear the speaker.
For what it's worth, I can hear you just fine.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else in the room wish to speak before we turn to Zoom?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to add in response to your question. I received this email. I've been traveling from the office of public advocate inviting people to the park. And I thought there were a couple of observations that should be, should be made. And, you know, I think the first thing is, no one has a right to invite people onto village property prior to our approving that property as public space. Second of all, because of that letter, people may go onto that property. They may hurt themselves and in that case, the village is liable. So I think it's entirely appropriate because of that, and we haven't worked this stuff out, that we consider putting up a sign that says, "No trespassing private property owned by the village of Tuxedo." That will protect us from any legal issues that may arise if somebody falls on that sleep piece of property because we haven't authorized it to be a park.
That is correct. Back to public comment, other hands raised. Mr. Guazzoni, three minutes, sir.
All right. My comments are addressed to the mayor and to the trustees. I have a friend who was on the police force, police department of Greenwood Lakes. He recently told me a story that sometime two years ago, he stopped a car very late at night for a strap, for a traffic violation in Greenwood Lakes. And the driver of the car claimed to be the police commissioner of Tuxedo Park and produced an ID card and a badge that stated that they were police commissioner of Tuxedo Park. The driver then insisted that he should be able to get out of the traffic stop scot-free. Well, my friend, the police officer duly confiscated the badge and ID card and turned it over to the Tuxedo Park Police Department. Upon further inquiry, my friend found out that all of the trustees of Tuxedo Park were given the same badge and ID card stating that they were all police commissioner, all the trustees, except for one who insisted that his card meanly read trustee of, trustee of Tuxedo Park. But such was life under ex-mayor McFadden. Now, my question is not about what was a Tuxedo Park trustee doing in Greenwood Lakes late at night. My question is more to the issue of why would the ex-mayor give out police commissioner badges and ID cards to all of the trustees when Tuxedo Park does not officially have a police commissioner? And I would like to see the same trustees and ex-mayor McFadden turn in their police commissioner badges and ID cards so that they can be, all be reissued ID cards that merely state village trustee. I would also like to give the opportunity to any trustee who didn't take part in getting a police commissioner badge or ID card to publicly state so for the record. Thank you for your audience.
Thank you, Mr. Guazzoni. Mr. Madden, I see your hand is up.
Thank you. First, I want to commend the village for taking the time to deliberate about this park proposal. I think that's the right thing to do. I look forward to engaging the village attorney about our various concern, very serious concerns about the legality of putting a park on this site. There's been a lot of disinformation and outright lies spread about this parcel of land over the years. Village residents are smart. I invite you to compare the detailed comment letter I submitted to the board regarding this proposal and which is available publicly on TPFYI and to decide for yourself who has more credibility speaking about this particular piece of land and, and the law surrounding it. I'm not going to touch on the legal part, but my letter has demonstrable facts, not opinions, including the slope of this parcel, which is twenty-six and a half degrees. That's an engineering fact. It is not subject to interpretation. Spot slopes on this parcel exceed thirty degrees. As trustee Brook just pointed out, why would the village invite residents into a demonstrably dangerous place while also exposing taxpayers to potential liability? I'll also point out that New York has a model law regarding steep, steep slopes and it applies to slopes over twenty-five degrees. And it recommends that those slopes not be disturbed at all, not at all, because of the risk of erosion on those kind of slopes. If you look at this slope, you will see it as loose rocky soil. It has already suffered from bad erosion and that risk of erosion is just heightened. The bottom of that slope is our drinking water. So I invite residents who want to learn more about this proposed park to go to TPFY and read my letter. And the last thing I will point out is that my letter also includes an offer to purchase this parcel for $25,000. Last time the deal was scuttled, we had an agreement at that price. It was scuttled because of Mr. Guazzioni's baseless threat of litigation. I've taken that issue off the table by agreeing to indemnify the village. Let me put $25,000 into context. It is $16.67 per square foot. On a per acre basis, that is $726,000. That's more than we paid for our two acre lot, which allows us to build a house. This parcel doesn't increase the buildable size of our lot one inch because of the slope it's on. It's a very, very generous offer. The village has the option of basically keeping this parcel the way it is and really benefiting no one in the village or selling it to us for $25,000 because we can absorb it into a code compliant lot. Take that $25,000 and invest it in a new park, whether it's at the south, south end of the lake or another, another site or to build a playground at the Weewild Park, which would benefit the whole community. I urge everyone to read my letter, consider those options, and I urge the trustees frankly to vote tonight to sell that parcel to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with a hand raised? I, I don't see anyone else at this point in time. Fine, thank you. Then we'll move on to trustee comments and we'll start with the deputy. Oh, there is? I'm sorry. Who? Oh, Ms. Pop, Ms. Pom?
Yeah, it's actually Martin Pom.
Mr. Pom, yeah.
Hi. I want to refer to a, a letter I wrote to John Ledwith, with the CC to the mayor and the trustees. Two weeks ago, I didn't get an answer. I wrote simply ask, pointing out what I see as a dangerous situation on Ontio Road with seven major gaps where there used to be boulders, road barriers, if you will, and they're not there anymore. As we approach winter icy conditions, I'm really scared to go, to drive up that road. And I think my neighbors have expressed that as well. So that was the letter, but then I really started thinking about this. Whose liability is it if something, God forbid, happens? Is it the village? Is it the land on which the boulders are resting? Literally one foot off the road. I'd just like to get some clarity as to what's going on, both with respect to my letter and the situation governing road safety and whose responsibility it is.
In response, Mr. Pom, we received your letter and the issue of the boulders along the edge of Ontio had been discussed prior to, to your letter. There were concerns raised by the homeowners below the road who were, who felt that the boulders posed a hazard should they be dislodged, roll down the steep slope and strike some of their property. We conducted an initial investigation to determine if the boulders are on our village-owned right of way or are on private property. And unfortunately, there are no ancient maps that really define the right of way for the various roads in the villages. But we believe at this point in time, I'm not quite sure where you went. Oh, there you are. We believe that at this point in time, those boulders are actually located on the property of, of the private landowner and they are not on village property. We will continue to work on this because I understand your concerns about Ontio Road and the steepness of the drop-off and the fact that there are other roads as well in the village that really require replacement boulders. We've had conversations with residents about West Lake Road towards the south end and concerns about people inadvertently driving into the lake. And we will continue our discussions. However, it appears at this point, and, and that may change, that those boulders are the responsibility of the landowner whose name I can't recall as I'm sitting here now.
But logically, someone's risk, the risk of someone going off the cliff seems a lot more pressing an issue than the boulder damaging some property theoretically. And anyway, I, I'm just worried about the safety of that road. It seems crazy not to deal with it by placing, you know, some boulders.
Well, even beyond boulders, I think we, we should give consideration to guide, a guide rail on that road. There's a, there's a guide rail that was built on Lookout at the very end of Lookout where some development was going to take place. I believe Michelle's husband had intended to perhaps purchase or build on that property. And those guide, those guide rail, that guide rail might be appropriate for Ontio if we could, if we could get in there. So if you have a chance, take a look at the guide rail up at the end of the cul-de-sac on Lookout Road and tell me what you think it's, and we'll, we'll continue the discussion because I certainly understand your concerns on this issue.
Well, thanks, thanks for that, but I really would like to get some banality as we go into winter. That's all I'm really concerned about.
Thank you, Mr. Pom. Anybody else have a hand raised? Mr. Guazzoni, you had your three minutes. You'll have to wait for the second round of public comment. Anybody else? Tori Biage? Gianni? Biagi? Sorry, I can't remember your letter.
That's okay. That's me.
That's you. Go ahead, sir. You actually are the person I was referring to in terms of the below, below the boulders on Ontio.
Yeah, you can call me ET for short.
Thank you, sir.
Easier for everybody. Yeah, I'm the person below and I just want to reinforce the point. I'm clearly I'm worried about the boulders damaging property. But beyond that, there are people in the house and there'll be people walking the street every day. So I think the risk to human life and human limb is as serious as was previously reported by the other gentleman. I've had interactions with the owner and it's fair to say I've not made what I would consider to be any progress in terms of him taking responsibility for moving those boulders. I, I do think it's, it's a village broad issue. I understand the village has all kind of legal responsibility it does not want to undertake and I fully respect that. Maybe if we can have kind of a smaller session meeting just to throw some ideas around to see how we can solve it altogether, I'd certainly be willing to put some time on it to see if we can come to a common conclusion.
Thank you, sir. I, I appreciate that sentiment and we will follow up on that point.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else on Zoom? Okay, looks like we're ready for trustee comments and we'll start with deputy cast, deputy mayor Casker.
I think I'd just like to thank all the Village of Tuxedo Park voters who overwhelmingly supported me at this recent election. It's humbling. I look forward to starting in January to look after the best interests of the, the town and the village. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Brook? Trustee Shaw?
Yes. Mayor and trustees and people listening. I would like to set the record straight about the false and inflammatory statement resident Claude Guazzoni made about me in the Board of Trustees meeting on October eighteen twenty-three. I was not a trustee in 2017 nor 2018 and did not grieve my taxes those years. However, Claude Guazzoni was a trustee in 2016 when I did grieve my taxes. In fact, here is what happened with the Board of Assessors in 2016 when Claude was a trustee. In February, the Shaw grievance was denied. Claude Guazzoni's parcel 10413, known as First Island nominees, taxes were reduced by 3,290.86. In June, the tax satorior settlement for the First Island nominees parcel 10413. In June, the tax satorior settlement for the first island nominees parcel one oh four one three. Uh, they approved that it was settled and then that led to another reduction of two thousand seventy-seven point twenty-eight. In total, Claude Guadzoni's taxes were reduced by five thousand three hundred sixty-eight point four, a reduction of twenty-two point seven percent. Mine was zero. Thank you.
Anything further, Trustee Shaw? On this, um, no? Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to, uh, reports oral and written.
Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I did it again. I guess that's, I, I'm, I'm too old fashioned. I'm sorry.
Uh, it's good.
I will, I will, trustee Shara, and I apologize again. I did it last, like the last week as well.
I, I just wanted to, uh, first of all, congratulate, uh, Chris Casker. Um, uh, I have mixed emotions. Honestly, I'm happy you won and I'm happy it was a landslide, but, uh, you will honestly be missed. Um, uh, and, uh, hopeful, uh, you're going to be very hard to replace. Let me just say that. So thanks, thanks for, uh, everything you've done on this board.
Thank you, Josh. Appreciate that.
Thank you, trustee Shara. Okay, uh, reports oral and written. The court report appears in, as an attachment, I believe, in the, um, online. Um, so we move on to, uh, Chief Conklin. Are you here?
Yes.
I, I am here.
Okay, chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Could you, uh, give us your report?
Sure. So, uh, for the month of October, we had two hundred and sixty-six calls for service or blotters. Um, zero crimes reported and zero arrests made. There were two property damage actions we responded to. We issued nine traffic tickets and thirteen warnings for vehicle and traffic infractions. We responded to two fire calls, three intrusion alarms, one medical call. We assisted the town police department twice. Um, approximately patrol, uh, two thousand eight hundred and twenty-six miles. And that concludes my report, sir.
That's great, chief. Uh, will you stick around for the, uh, agenda item about possibly reducing the village's speed limit from thirty to twenty-five so we can get your expert opinion on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the last thing is, my understanding is we purchased a new hybrid police cruiser?
Correct.
And?
We.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, I was gonna say, we, we ordered it back in, I believe, February or March. Um, it, it took a while to get and we will be taking ownership of it on Friday.
Okay, uh, with respect to that, uh, that would mean we'd have one surplus gas-powered vehicle, which we're going to send to auction?
Yes, so the vehicle that it replaces will be, um, listed on auctions online with permission from the board. And usually we sell to the highest bidder.
And that would mean we'd have a fleet of three hybrid police vehicles for environmentally, uh, friendly purposes. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much, chief. We'll talk to you in a bit about the speed limit change proposal.
Okay, no problem.
Uh, next we turn to, uh, the D P W report.
Well, now that he was just speaking about that, the car that they're getting rid of, we just worked on taking all the decals and all the equipment out of it. So it's ready to go on and off international whenever.
That's great.
Ma- mayor, yeah, we, you can't hear.
Okay, could you, uh, uh, yeah, chief, would you step to the mic? Thank you. You can repeat that, please.
Yeah, so I, I was just saying that, uh, the car that they're getting rid of, nine five five, we've removed the decals from it and, uh, all the equipment from inside of it. So it's ready to go on the auction site, uh, whenever you're ready. Um, for my report, um, we, uh, brought in the raft and removed all the ropes and buoys at Weewaw Park. We also did a leaf cleanup there. We had cut down some dead trees at the southern end of West Lake Road. We also, uh, removed some dead trees that the Board of Trustees approved with tree service to remove for us. Um, we installed new U joints on the gate valve at the Weewaw Dam, so that's operational again. Uh, we paved the upper part of Serpatine Road. We installed a eight-inch drain pipe on West Lake Road, uh, ahead of paving, which will happen. Um, we finished the repair of a concrete culvert on Tuxedo Road. Uh, cut up a fallen tree on Turtle Mountain Road, steam clean boat trailer, installed a new heater, mountain farm pump station, worked on trucks, uh, got our, uh, uh, salt spreaders ready for winter. Uh, we did, uh, leaf cleanups at the village office here. Uh, Weewaw Park, which I already mentioned, the large triangle on Tuxedo Road. Uh, clean drains and catch basins. Uh, started picking up leaves throughout the whole village, uh, patched potholes on West Lake Road near the Tuxedo Club. And then for water and sewer, finished third quarter water meter reading, removed seasonal meters. Uh, we turned off the water at Weewaw Park and winterized the back house. Um, we did various, uh, utility markouts, uh, installed a new meter at one seventeen Tower Hill Road. Installed an irrigation meter at the Gruterich residence and repaired three water meters.
Uh, could you give us an update on the milling issue? I know we had all planned to see the road, uh, worked upon earlier this week. What took, what happened?
Well, it was the contractor had one of their machines broke down, so they if, if you came into the village today, you see it's there now, so it is, it is gonna happen.
Okay.
It's gonna happen Monday and Tuesday of this coming week. And then the paving will happen the following Monday. We'll start paving.
Okay, we'll, we'll get a code read out to the residents with respect to those dates and put the usual signs up at the booth and the gate.
For the milling, you know, before Friday.
Thank you.
And, uh, and then just before we pay it, we'll, we'll put signs up and get a code read out.
Thank you so much.
Quick, quick question. What, what's the earliest that they might start milling?
Sorry about time?
Yeah.
In the morning?
Time, yeah, so people know.
Uh.
They need to leave early to work or, you know, it's not start by seven.
Traffic's gonna be able to move. It's not, it's not gonna be, you know, that, that much of a problem. Uh, I, I, I have a sort of a plan for traffic where people, they'll start down by the church going up, so I think any, the incoming vehicle will send up block fill. But it, it'll be okay. It's not gonna be a problem. And I, I wouldn't expect them to start anytime that, that, that.
Okay.
Okay, um, the, the water department report and the treasurer's report are both attached to the record. Um, any comments or questions by the trustees about those?
None for me.
Okay. Trustee Shara, any comments about those, uh, tax reports? Okay. Um, uh, I've been, I've been instructed on Robert's Rules of Order, uh, that actually we have to make a motion to accept the reports and make them part of the permanent record. So, uh, I'm gonna make a motion, be resolved that the board add all written reports to the permanent record. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Chris, you beat out, uh, trustee Brooke, uh, second by, uh, trustee Cast, Deputy Mayor Casker. Um, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, it's unanimous. Everybody votes yes, including the mayor. For the, for the clerk's benefit, okay. Uh, the next item is approval of the meeting minutes of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Uh, uh, trustee Shaw, do you have some comments on the minutes?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead.
But minutes are the same as they were, haven't changed. And my comment is that there's only one resolution that has editorialized comments, and that's about Sterling car, carting contract. All the others are just straight resolutions and so I object to that.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to amend the minutes?
I would.
Okay.
Do that, yeah.
All right.
And I would like to keep it so that it's, I think it will save Elizabeth a lot of time going forward to just have strictly what the resolution is instead of writing some commentary on each of the resolution or none, but.
Is there a second to amend the, uh, uh, minutes, uh, based upon trustee Shaw's, uh, motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Anybody, otherwise I have something to say.
I, I, I just, I, I don't object to the, what is in the minutes, the historic background of dates and times and why we signed the resolution late. I have no problems with them.
Yeah, I, I would agree with, with, uh, uh, trustee Casker. I, I don't think you can completely whitewash the history here. And so I believe that the preamble as stated by trustee Shaw and objected to by her is in fact appropriate in this particular instance. And, uh, uh, anybody else have any comments? Or we'll take a vote on the motion?
I will. I, the reason I object to it, and I think it was clear in my email, is there was a reason that the contract was not extended. It's not that the prior administration forgot, and that's not included in there, that there is a reason for it.
Well, please feel free to state the reason why the contract that expired in November of twenty twenty-two, which had provisions for three yearly extensions, was not extended. And what action was taken by the previous administration to ensure that garbage collection would continue on something other than a fingers-crossed month-to-month basis? Go ahead, the floor is yours.
Uh, they had an agreement, as far as I know, between, uh, the mayor and the Sterling party because they were on probation for some things that they weren't doing. Partly some of the garbage collection. So they had a month-to-month, so.
Well, the month-to-month was, was, was a matter of law. I mean, it continues month-to-month. But the, the carting company, in, in all due respect, could have turned around to us during this period when there was no contract to say, you know what, we got a, we got a better deal somewhere else. We're gonna service another municipality. Good luck to you. And where would that have put us? So, uh, I believe the preamble is appropriate. Whatever reason you had for, as a deputy mayor for not renewing it is your reason that you just explained. And, uh, let's, let's call the question. All in favor of amending the, uh, amending the minutes to remove the preamble, please say aye. All, uh, uh, who are not in favor, please say no or nay. No. All who wish to abstain?
I don't think it's just a big issue. The amendmentation can accept the preamble and simply say, add the phrase that there was a disagreement with the carting company because of something that they had done. And then just, you know, that way the preamble is appropriate. It references the reason and we just get on with it.
Well, uh, I, I was not present. Uh, I, I don't have any information on that. All of you are on the board other than me. So, uh, if you, you want to amend the preamble, um, trustee Shara?
Listen, I'm with, uh, trustee Brooke. I, I just don't think this is, uh, a, a big deal. I'm not sure why we're making a big, uh, deal out of it. Um, uh, I I, I don't think this is a good use of time. I feel like we can approve the minutes at the next meeting and let's, um, um, uh, okay. I'm, I'm, I, go ahead.
Yeah, so look, we either agree to change the minutes or not.
Okay, so.
We have to answer, so.
Here, okay, so this is, but here's the issue, right, is that, is there a precedent question? And I don't know if there is a precedent question about whether or not, um, we typically have preamble or we don't, right? And if we don't normally have preamble, the preamble, the question is, why are we doing it now? And that's the question. And I don't, I don't have the history here to know, are we setting new precedent?
Okay, so.
So, and, and if we are setting precedent, that requires a, a more in-depth conversation. Mayor, you call it, you call it whitewashing, okay? Right? I don't know if that's the case.
Well, we know the facts, trustee Shara. We know that there was no co- garbage contract in effect from November twenty twenty-two until it was, uh, signed, uh, last month. We know that.
Right, yes.
So, those are the facts. And the explanation as to why, I cannot give that explanation.
I understand.
So if you want to table it and work on the preamble or, or move to strike the preamble at a future meeting, that's fine with me, but, um, you know.
I guess my, I guess, let me put the question to you though, which is is this preamble? The, the preamble is clearly important to you on this. And so right? And, and so I, my, my question is, can you live without the preamble?
You know, I, I did not write the preamble. Uh, it's perfectly acceptable to me. I believe it's truthful. And it contains information that I have personal knowledge of in terms of what I did once I became mayor. Um, and it, it, to me, it's important, but I can be outvoted. I mean, I'm only one vote. If you want to, I want to remove it, then vote to remove it. But if you want to table it, we'll table it. I'm, I'm willing to do anything. I'm only one person.
Let, let, let me suggest, we have three choices. We can approve it. We can reject it or we can table it. I suggest, uh, Tinka, you add about, you, you consider adding a phrase that reflects it?
In fact, I just think we should not have preambles. None of the other ones have preambles. We had a long conversation about the police cameras also, moving it from the back gate to the front. There's no history in there in the preamble of, it's just the resolution about we resolve to pay for.
And, and in fairness, there, and in fairness, there is no whitewashing, right? I mean, this is a recorded conversation.
But I think from my perspective, I, I would say let's just get on with it. We're spending too much time on it.
I, I agree.
Instead of minutes, let's just, um, I, I withdraw my you know, su- support for an edit. Let's just approve and get on with it.
Okay, um, then, um, the motion, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Shaw.
So are we then making a precedent as Josh was saying that we're going to do preambles for all of them? Or are we just deciding, let's not do preambles? I've not been doing it for the I forget how long now that we haven't had preambles, just the resolution. So are we setting a precedent? Maybe then.
We're, we're the Board of Trustees. We're not, we're not setting any precedent. I mean, uh, you can, you can interpret it any way you want. I think we should call the question. All in favor, all in favor of, of changing the, changing the minutes to exclude the preamble, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, uh.
Sure, what's the?
Excluding.
Excluding the preamble.
To amend the minutes now.
Two ayes, trustee Brooke?
I don't care. I abstain.
Okay, uh, all those opposed to, uh, changing the preamble, I, I say, don't change the preamble.
I say, yeah, I don't agree with changing it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll support not changing preamble.
Okay, all right. It, 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 the motion fails two to three. We can move on.
We have to prove minutes now.
Right, um, all those in favor of approving the, uh, be resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes from October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. I, I'll make a motion. Is there, I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Brooke. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Trustee Brooke?
Aye.
Aye, trustee Shaw? Nay, uh, four to one. Trustee Shaw votes nay. Okay, getting to the substantive issues, village elections, um. I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to follow the town election last Tuesday that was run by the Orange County Board of Elections. But I personally was very impressed that within an hour and a half of the closing of the polls at nine o'clock, the results were in. And you could actually go online and watch the tabulation take place. There were four, uh, separate districts that voted within the town. And as those districts came in, the numbers increased and eventually there was a final tally. And that tally included the absentee ballots. It included, uh, the, uh, day of election ballots. And I think that the Board of Elections did a great job with the town's, uh, election of last week in terms of how they handled it. Um, I would, uh, defer at this point to Councilmember Lindsay to ask her opinion as to how she felt it went.
It's all, always gone very smoothly and of course in the town we also have early voting for day day prior. So those votes were also calculated.
And I would note for the record that I read that starting January first, uh, New York State will permit, uh, mail-in voting as part of the process of voting in elections. Which means there's gonna be a whole bunch of folks that are gonna mail in their ballots and either they're gonna be mailing them in in June to Elizabeth. Who has already indicated she would prefer a transfer of this authority to Orange County. Or are they going to be mailed to Orange County? As I said in my initial discussion about this. The events of last June would not have taken place with respect to absentee ballots. Any absentee ballots would have been handled by the Orange County Board of Elections. They would have reviewed the voter register, compared the signatures. And if there are any issues, the Orange County Board of Elections, unlike the village clerk. Has the authority to contact the voter to let them know there's a problem with their absentee ballots. And we have a lot of absentee ballots and each voter in this community. Whose absentee ballot was, in the view of the Board of Elections problematic, would have the opportunity to cure it. And that's a major difference between a village-run election and an Orange County Board of Election. And I personally support the change. I think it'll be good for all of us. It'll be good for the village and it will avoid the issues that we faced this past June. And I'll now open the discussion to other members of the board. Deputy Mayor Casker.
As somebody who's on the ballot in in the town, I can say I watched the clerk. Tally the votes and it was as simple as taking a memory disc and stick it in a computer and sending it to Orange County. And it was very low stress and then we got to watch the live results as the district came in. Poll workers brought the materials in, she signed a piece of paper, checked the seal. And then it was taken away. So very smooth process, very easy. And I totally support the county taking over for the village.
Trustee Brooke?
I believe the first time we discussed it, we asked for our, for Jared. To provide the pros and cons. I don't think I recite, received that, but aside from that. I think given the litigiousness that existed at the last time around. I want to make sure that if we wish to take it back, we can take it back. It's not a problem. But, you know, if that is in fact the case. Which I would defer to Jared on that, I think we should. We should have the, the. The Board of Elections handle the process.
Jared, are you on?
I am mayor and in response to trustee Brooke's question, yes, the village can. Pass a resolution withdrawing the transfer of authority. From the Board of Elections back to the village.
Speed time?
And you are, Jared, you you believe it is a, a process that you would recommend that we support?
I I'd prefer, that's my personal opinion, trustee Brooke. I don't know if if if. Respectfully, I I don't know that, you know, I, my opinion matters much to to all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Sher, I'm sorry, trustee Shaw, you're in the room, you get to go first.
Well, I would say that. Lucky that the town didn't have a T R O file the day of election or probably.
Trustee Sher.
I, I I would be supportive of moving it to the, the Board of Elections.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to read a resolution. It's rather lengthy, but it's important. Yes.
I mean, isn't that something, did you want to read the resolution and have a vote now?
Well, I think, I I think, I think from the perspective of the decision. You know, for efficiency. You know, the good news is we don't have to make this decision now. We can make it a week from now or a month from now because the next election isn't for a long time.
We have to give six months' lead time, so we kind of have to make it now.
Oh, six month, okay, Jared hadn't mentioned that. Okay, then we'll take election today. I, as I've thought about it. I'm in favor of moving it to the. The, the county. But you said we have to make that decision six months in advance. If we withdraw from the county, that has to also be six months in advance.
I don't have any incident.
I would like to know that. I mean, we can have a special meeting. I mean, I would like to know, like, how difficult is it for us to? Where do we move it back?
Attorney Cashow, if if we have a change of heart between now and, are you saying between now and the June election, trustee Brooke? That we have a change of heart or do we have a change of heart after we see how things go?
I I'm assuming it's news to me that we have to do this six months in advance. Jared? You know, I assume.
Yeah, so I had circulated a memo that that went into this a while ago. I don't know the exact date that I had sent it, but. The the process is such that you'd need to pass a resolution and then within ten days or. Ten days after the date of the resolution, you have to post. Say, a summary of of what the resolution calls for on the village's website and also on the village's bulletin board. The voters of the village may then request a referendum vote on this. So that's, that's what the added lead time is for, is to allow that process to unfold. And also to allow the Board of Elections. The opportunity to prepare for and then conduct to the election.
Okay, with respect to rescinding the authorization to the Board of Elections, is that also a six-month process?
I do not believe it is that long in the reverse, trustee Brooke. I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. Individually, but I do not believe the same long criteria applies.
Yeah, I intuitively that seems correct, so I would say I would endorse the. Resolution presented to move the election to the county board. And I would, you know, if you can provide some guidance, if we have second thoughts or anything, it can come before us, but we've made a decision and we can go forward.
Thank you. All right, I'm I'm going to read the resolution, transferring the conduct of village elections to the Orange County Boards of, Board of Elections. Whereas the village of Tuxedo Park has been conducting its own elections pursuant to New York State election law, Article fifteen. And village law three dash three one two. And whereas the village board of trustees has determined that it would be more efficient for the village. To transfer the conduct of village elections to the Orange County Board of Elections, also known as the county board. Given the county board's resources and their experience and expertise in conducting municipal elections. And whereas if the county board conducts the village elections. The village may choose its own election inspectors from within the village, from a list provided by the county board. And whereas if the county board conducts the village elections, the village clerk. And other village officials may be present at the polls when they close. And observe the counting of the votes, including all absentee ballots. And whereas the county board will receive nominating and other petitions in accordance with New York State law. And provide all required publication and notices and compensate all election workers in accordance with New York State law. And whereas in accordance with election law, section four dash one oh four. The village shall submit to the county board a list of polling places for village elections. And the polling places shall be designated by the county board in consultation with the village. And whereas upon transfer of the conduct of the village elections, the elections may continue to be held. On the third Tuesday in June, as now permitted by New York State election law, Article fifteen. Now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the New York State election law, section fifteen one oh four. Subdivision one C, the Board of Trustees determines that the village of Tuxedo Park elections. Shall be conducted by the Orange County Board of Elections. And it is further resolved that upon such transfer, and so long as permitted by New York State law. Village of Tuxedo Park elections shall continue to take place on the third Tuesday in June. And be it further resolved that this resolution is subject to a permissive referendum. As provided in Article nine of the New York State Village Law and is not effective until either A. The applicable time period has elapsed to file a petition for a referendum and no such petition has been timely. And properly filed and B, if such petition has been timely and properly filed. A referendum has been conducted approving this resolution and is further resolved. The village board of trustees authorizes the village clerk to take such action as may be necessary to affect the terms of this resolution. I make the following motion as set forth above. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by deputy mayor Casker, voice vote. Mayor Citron votes aye. Deputy Mayor Casker?
Aye.
Trustee Brooke?
Aye.
Trustee Sher.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
I don't think we have enough information.
Okay, the vote is four to one, the resolution is adopted. Thank you all. The next item involves the I B E W contract for the D P W workers. In June of this year, I think it was June twenty sixth, Mayor McFadden signed a memorandum of agreement. With the I B E W with the permission of the Board of Trustees. The I B E W rep appeared at village hall and we we discussed certain issues. One of them is that the union. Wants a formal collective bargaining agreement to be executed by me now as the mayor. Incorporating the memorandum of agreement, the terms of the memorandum of agreement into the collective bargaining agreement. I provided all of the trustees the memorandum as well as the proposed C B A or collective bargaining agreement. I also gave it before I provided it to the trustees to attorney Cashow for his review to ensure that. All the terms are appropriately reflected from the memorandum of agreement. Into the collective bargaining agreement and there's no additional wording. I, my understanding is that attorney Cashow. Has, needs additional time to complete that evaluation. Is that true, Jared?
That's correct. We've requested information of the union's council and we understand that information's forthcoming.
Okay, therefore I am making a resolution. I I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a resolution authorizing with the consent of the board. That I be permitted to sign the collective bargaining agreement subject to the approval of of the village attorney. And I'll read the proposed resolution and then we can discuss it. Be it resolved that the board authorizes the mayor to sign the collective bargaining agreement with the I B E W after it is approved by council. Any discussion, folks?
I don't, I I, you know, I can't imagine what Jared will do is talk about are there issues in that? That potentially create a bad precedent. And with respect to future negotiations. So what I'm saying is I'd like to know. What those issues can be. Because I'm perfectly happy to dug into power, but we haven't heard from the lawyer on what the issues can be with respect to. You know, collective bargain agreement, are there issues in that agreement?
Right, but I think if there are no issues, what we're saying is the mayor can sign it. If there are issues, he probably won't sign it.
That's correct. If the attorney advises all of us that there are issues, then I would not sign it and we'd have to decide where to go from there.
Okay, so, subject to, subject to no issues, I'm, I support it.
Okay. Trustee, trustee Sher, you have any, anything to say on this issue?
No, I agree with trustee Brooke.
Okay, therefore, I will make that motion. Do I have a second on the motion I just read?
Second.
Okay, voice vote again, mayor Citron votes aye, deputy mayor Casker?
Aye.
Trustee Brooke?
Aye.
Trustee Sher?
Aye.
Trustee Shaw?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, Elizabeth. The next item on the agenda is exemption from county taxation. We had actually approved this resolution at the meeting in October. However, we, the resolution left out the section block and lot number of the property. That we were addressing, so this is essentially an amended resolution. The modification of a resolution that was adopted on October eighteenth. To exempt our property from county taxation and I'll read it as follows. Be it resolved that the village of Tuxedo Park requests permission from the county of Orange for the exemption. From county taxation in the year twenty twenty five on certain real property. Section block lot number two one three dash three dash twelve. Located in the town of Tuxedo for the use of the village of Tuxedo Park Water System. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by deputy mayor Casker, voice vote, mayor Citron votes aye.
Aye.
Deputy mayor Casker votes aye, trustee Brooke votes aye, trustee Sher?
Aye.
Trustee Shaw. Aye, unanimous, Elizabeth. Okay, moving right along. On October's agenda, we had a proposal to, for authorization to hire part-time police officer Stephen Christian. I asked that that be tabled because I wish to meet with Mr. Christian. I found him to be a commendable officer and a worthy candidate to join the department. I don't remember, maybe it was a week ago we had our meeting, but at this point in time, I'd like to move. That it be resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize Police Chief Conklin to hire Stephen Christian to the position of part-time police officer. At an hourly rate of twenty seven dollars and thirty cents Monday to Friday. And thirty two dollars and ninety cents on Saturday and Sunday, and I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by deputy mayor Casker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Sher? Aye. Unanimous, Elizabeth. The next item is new business and involves discussion of Pon Three Bridge, which is the bridge between. Pon Three and the Weewah. I suppose that all the residents are somewhat familiar with it. We had a, a survey of that bridge done by Schnabel Engineering in twenty twenty. As part of the process of building the dam and they found that 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 bridge was deficient. And their report has been included as an, as an addendum to the agenda for anyone who wants to see it. More recently, within the last couple of months, we asked our current engineer. Weston and Sampson whether they would undertake to evaluate the bridge. And the issue becomes whether we need a second more updated evaluation. Or whether we could go forward with necessary repairs. Through Weston and Sampson, but based on the twenty twenty extensive evaluation done by Schnabel. The Weston and Sampson would like, I think, thirty five hundred dollars. To do, to do an initial study to reach their own conclusions about what needs to be done. And I am bringing this to the board because I think there might be some cost savings if we were able to use the earlier evaluation. Because, you know, the bridge certainly didn't get better. If anything, it got worse, it may need the repair, but. We'll spend another thirty five hundred dollars in light of the fact that we have a rather extensive. Evaluation from twenty twenty with photographs and recommendations that could be used by our current engineer. To actually make a proposal with respect to the cost of making that repair. I'll open that up to discussion to the board.
Probably best for John to give this. Do you want the whole thing and why we wish out to? Weston and Sampson, the, the, the Schnabel one was. Were they going to do the work also?
No, it was just for putting together their proposal, which was about fifty thousand.
Yes, maybe a little more, fifty eight.
Yeah, in in recent years, we've lost a little bit of confidence in Schnabel because of deficiencies we found in the dam. And we were not sure about bringing them back, so we sought, you know, another estimate from an engineer that we were dealing with recently.
So I guess the question remains the same. I I hope you've all had a chance to read the Schnabel.
I guess if, if we found deficiencies in Schnabel's work. That is a substantive element and I would have no problem spending thirty five hundred bucks to review that. And come up with a plan that we then have to approve. Because I'd hate to approve something based on a deficient.
Well, what they would do is they would actually go and do a reinspection of the, of the bridge. And take their own photographs and measurements and reach their own conclusion about the condition of the bridge. And then they would put forward a proposal and that would be, you know, this is the cost of creating that proposal.
Yeah, I, I was one other, if I, if I may, there is one other point. Weston and Sampson did help us. Probably over ten years ago redo a bridge down by. Warwick Brook Road. It was at least half the size of the bridge by the dam. But they worked with us and D P W was able to do. A fairly large amount of the work because of the design that Weston and Sampson put together. So I think another part of going with Weston and Sampson is we've worked with them in the past. in trying to offset some of the expenses by designing a project that we could do at least seventy five percent in-house.
I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, we could do a majority of it.
So
which is the same thing they did. They put together proposals for the water plant that then the DPW was fixed.
Right.
Was doing and anyway.
Yeah, so I I guess I'm this, I don't know if I have this right. In twenty twenty, Schnabel inspected the dam and then wrote a proposal with three tasks that totaled fifty some thousand dollars that would basically said for the bridge. Yep, they said the the I beams are spans are rotten. We need to replace them. We want to do with concrete ones. DPW can do all the most of the demolition and can do the paving and a whole bunch of mostly the work and engineers would just come there to inspect. So they they run charges a lot of money for the plans and the specs and to help with the bidding process for the concrete spans. Right? That was twenty twenty-three years ago. So we know the bridge, we're confident the bridge needs work, right?
We we have pictures of the underside that show deterioration that we should be concerned about.
And so what we're what current engineering company is saying, hey, for three five hundred bucks, we'll tell you the bridge needs work. I don't, I mean, that's, I don't think we need to pay, I think we need them to give us a proposal like Schnabel did three years ago. I don't think we need to pay them to tell us the bridge is broke. We already know it's broke. Right?
Thank you.
Yes.
I I'm just trying to understand.
All I have.
I mean, I read their letter and it, you know, but I I think we know what it is. We need to know how to fix it.
Yeah, I think part of the issue is they really haven't seen it themselves.
Yes.
And I also probably didn't share Schnabel's proposal with them. So so they really don't know what it is until they see it.
Right, so maybe it's reframe the question to them. They're like, hey, here's Schnabel's inspection. We know it's broken. Can you come give us a proposal on how to fix it?
Mm hmm, we could do that.
Does that make sense?
And and listen, I'm also, as I've discussed with the mayor, I'm not opposed to asking a third engineer, so we've, you know, exhausted, you know.
So what you're suggesting is we want to move forward with repair because we know it's broken. Make us a proposal to order and make a proposal. They have to do the inspection, but it's their nickel, not our nickel.
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor of that.
Great idea.
Do we want to try to reach out to a third engineer to exhaust all of our?
Well, the third engineer is going to be a stranger. It's not, it's less likely that they'll they'll.
I don't I don't think we need a third engineer. We just get it done.
I just don't want to give the opinion that I'm always pushing Weston and Sampson, but obviously there's other engineers out there.
I mean, why don't we why don't we ask Schnabel to update their plan and at least get something that.
Sure, we could ask them that.
And if they're way different than Weston Sampson, we have to explore more.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah, I I mean, in terms of performance, we should seek multiple. We should seek multiples. It's sort of required.
Our position is we should want to repair the bridge. We'd like a formal proposal from you on what repairs are necessary and will be helpful to having you inspect it. Done, so good idea. We don't have to pay the.
Yeah, that's the key.
They don't know that we know it's broken. I don't think based on John's comments, right? Okay.
Okay, so we'll we'll table that and ask you go forward with cost saving to to get the kind of proposals we need to figure out what we have to do. That's great. Thank you. All right, new business item B. In August of twenty twenty-two, Governor Hochul signed a law that permits municipalities to reduce the maximum speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. Up until last year, the maximum, the minute, the maximum reduction could be to thirty miles an hour with the exception for what they call linear roadways. In other words, say, within the village of Tuxedo Park, we could make the causeway twenty-five because it's a linear roadway and it's a certain distance, but now the entire village can have a reduced speed limit of of twenty-five miles an hour. And this is something that we should talk about. We're not obviously not going to make this decision tonight. But I think ultimately it's it's something worth considering in light of the nature of our roads and the lack of shoulders and the 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 precipices and the possibility of driving in the lake. A reduction in the speed limit for safety of pedestrians and cyclists and motorists is something that we should seriously consider. I'm not saying even that the Board of Trustees should make the final decision. We might put this to referendum because it affects everybody in the village and we could do that if we agreed in February or March, actually make it a referendum item and they could make that determination, but I'd like to get the discussion started. And for that purpose, I've asked Chief Conklin if he would give us some remarks as to his expert opinion regarding maximum speed limits and the reduction of the same within our village. Chief?
Yes, Mayor, so I've been a strong advocate for the village reducing the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour. When the last two previous boards discussed this, you know, as you mentioned, Tuxedo Park's got very narrow roads, no shoulders, very windy roads. To my knowledge, there's been two vehicles that drove into Tuxedo Lake already. There could have been more years ago that I'm unaware of. But yeah, I I definitely support it and I I think it should be done. Thirty miles an hour seems too fast on a lot of these streets.
Hey, chief, do you know how fast the vehicles are going when they drove into the lake?
We don't know because, you know, obviously we weren't there at the time running radar. And people usually don't admit that they were speeding, but you know, we don't know if speed was a fact on either one. But I do know that, you know, driving the roads myself, you know, thirty miles an hour in in a lot of areas is is too fast in Tuxedo Park. That's that's my opinion.
Now, chief, just from your experience, you when the speed limit's posted, let's say it's thirty, is it unusual for people to say drive thirty-five, maybe five miles an hour over the speed limit? And if we were to reduce it to twenty-five, might that get people to go thirty rather than thirty-five? I mean, in your in your experience, when people exceed the speed limit, and I don't mean going fifty or sixty, but over the speed limit, does do they do about five to seven miles an hour over the speed limit? And by reducing it by five miles an hour, you actually cut down the in quotes speeding?
Yes, so I mean, we're taught when we go to when we become radar certified, we're taught to give a leeway of five to seven miles per hour for tires, speedometer, you know, faulty speedometers. So, you know, I mean, we police don't write tickets for, you know, doing four or five miles an hour over the speed limit unless it's unreasonable. You know, and there's extenuating circumstances. So, yes, to to on your point, the five to seven miles an hour, people usually do anyway, but that would keep the speed at thirty rather than thirty-five.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief?
I have one question. Didn't we start that in certain locations where it's twenty-five?
Yeah, we did.
You well, no, throughout the village, there's the yellow signs, there there's yellow or there's green signs. And they have recommended or suggested speeds. Those are, those are just, you know, the board decided, let's make this a recommended speed or some of them were on my request or a resident's request to, you know, to lower the speed limit in certain areas. But it's not regulatory and it's not enforceable. It's it's a suggested speed. So, you know, those are the yellow signs. Those are not enforceable. Again, they're they're suggestive. By making a twenty-five mile per hour per hour zone, you would have the the white, the white signs with the black lettering. Those are the enforceable signs. And you did, as a board, you did start the process. The prior village attorney opined on it and and here we are again tonight because the law just went into effect recently. So.
Chief, are you aware of any portions of village roadway where it's posted as a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit?
Not speed limit. There are posted, like I said, the yellow signs or the green signs. I know Turtle Point Road is one of them. It's a fifteen mile an hour suggested speed on a sharp bend. Clubhouse Road is another one where we put you know, a yellow sign, suggested recommended speed. Again, it's not enforceable. It says, you know, we recommend you do fifteen miles per hour, but the speed limit is actually thirty.
Yeah, so the enforceable, the enforceable speed limit throughout the entire village on all roadways is thirty miles an hour, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So any anything else? I mean, it's just a discussion at this point.
Yeah, I just have a question. Couldn't you on the ones that are suggested twenty-five, couldn't you make them enforceable? Or does it have to be the entire village that's one speed limit to be enforceable? Or do you have two different speed limits?
I I believe I believe the village board can set which roads have different speed limits. That's how I've seen it in other towns and villages. But that's up to, you know, that's a board decision. It's usually, it's easy, I can tell you, it's easier to make the whole village one speed and then you only have to put one sign at each entrance. If you do certain roads, you're going to have signage all over the place and, you know, it's an aesthetic issue in Tuxedo Park. Signs are definitely a an issue.
Jeff Boss quoted a hundred and five dollars per sign. Is that correct, sir? Hundred five dollars per sign to replace the speed signs. Attorney Cashout, do you have any anything to say on this point?
I, Mayor, I'd strongly recommend that the village conduct a traffic study for modifying any of its speed limits and frankly, just to dovetail on on some of the comments that were made earlier this evening by Mr. Biagioni and Mr. Pomp. It may be worthwhile to include as part of that traffic study railing along that roadway.
Thank you, sir. So it's the attorney's suggestion, recommendation, strong, I assume, that we do hire a traffic engineer. And I was thinking maybe we could hire a traffic engineer with the funds we saved by not paying thirty five hundred dollars to Weston and Sampson for her repeat study, but we'll look into that. Would you, John, be able to get us some traffic engineers and what they would want to do a study of our village roads and and reach conclusions about speed limits? Thank you.
So, Mayor, since we're doing this and I and I know Jared mentioned Antiar Road, but I I would I would expand it to be not only speed limit, but also potentially other areas of the park where there are dangers. So, for example, Tate, you know, had mentioned, I always worry when I'm running around the lake, very worried, running around, you know, that that windy area. And and there's there's other areas. I mean, you know, I have two two children. Every time they go for a walk, every time they ride their bikes, you know, it's a big concern and I know that's true for most village residents. So I would expand it to not just speed limit, but other dangerous areas and are there things we can do to make this village safer?
Thank you, trustee Sher. Well said, well said. And and John, you'll note that as well. Thanks. Okay. All right, move on to the next item. Levy unpaid village taxes onto the town-county tax bill. This requires a resolution. As you all are aware, unpaid taxes are sent to the county for collection. So I have a resolution in front of me that I'll read. Be it resolved that the village clerk be authorized to send to the County of Orange Commissioner of Finance the attached parcel list of unpaid twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four village taxes and penalties totaling forty-three thousand, seven hundred, excuse me, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents for levy onto the January twenty twenty-four town-county tax bill of each parcel and that the parcel list has been compared to the original tax warrant tax roll and found to be correct. I will move that resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, unanimous, please, Elizabeth.
Thank you. I can say one thing. I realize there's a typo in there. It should just say village taxes. It's not taxes and penalties. That was a mistake. I apologize.
Subject to that amendment, the resolution passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, authorize the Fike Nature Association annual bird count. I think it does. Apparently, the Fike Nature Association has requested to enter the village as they do every year to conduct a bird count. Elizabeth, do you have any information on that beyond what I just said?
No, they they do it every year. We do have something on the website that people can look at their request for it. And it's quite standard and they're a nice group and they come in and they do their bird count and it's part of something bigger. And we always say yes. We have no reason to say no.
Any discussion on this?
No, it's okay. Pretty standard.
All right, all in favor?
It'd be nice to get a copy of the results. I mean.
I I think we had them last year.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of authorizing the Fike Nature Association entry into the village to do their annual bird count, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, Elizabeth? Okay, as I mentioned earlier.
The motion.
I made the motion and all right, I made the motion and did you second it? Sure, deputy mayor seconded.
Thank you.
Okay. We're moving, we're moving along here unlike last month. I I hope everybody appreciates that. As I mentioned earlier, we're buying a hybrid police cruiser. The cruiser has to be financed as part of our as part of our business. We have two quotes. Ordinarily would get three. Elizabeth, would you explain what took place?
I just have not been able to get a third quote. I have reached out to different banks. I've been told by a couple of them that they don't work with municipalities anymore. I also reached out to the vendor that's selling us the car and I filled out the paperwork. I never heard back. I followed up. I still never heard back. So I think usually the Green County estimates usually prove to be the lowest, so I thought, you know, I present these two that I do have. And if something, one of my, you know, previous attempts to get a quote comes through that ends up being lower, we could always go for that. But I don't know what else. I just haven't gotten it. I haven't, no one's given me anything.
There's a little history behind this, isn't there, where the delay caused us to lose a financing agreement?
Yes, that's true. That 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 is true. I mean, this is also the first vehicle that I've been involved with and the financing and we, I kind of learned maybe to allow more leeway next time. I, you know, I just didn't know. I thought it was going to be delivered in June, so I told them June. And, you know, by July, they said, well, we can't really honor the agreement anymore, which didn't seem too unreasonable. So, you know, that that would be, you know, some a learning experience for me.
So here we are in November and we have two two proposals, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay, any questions for for Elizabeth on this? No.
I just have one question. Did you reach out to the accountants to see if they had suggestions?
No, I did not.
I mean, they might have, I don't know. They deal only with municipalities, so.
I'll ask them tomorrow.
Yeah, who knows? They might have. I mean, they were the ones who suggested New York class, you know.
Elizabeth, what's the difference in the two proposals?
Let's see, I have them online. I don't have them in front of me. But they are, and the mayor has them there in this, the thing. But I can get them for you in just a second.
Best bid was from Green County, so I I say we just approve it.
How about we approve it subject to
Better deal.
A better deal with the Would that be fair?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Do we have, do we have to, do we have to finalize this before we take delivery of the car? The chief says it's coming on Friday.
I think to be hon, like I said, it's my first time doing this, so once I follows the lead of the
To make the choice.
I'll make the best choice. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Both quotes seem to be exactly the same, two, two, five, two, five and three cents.
Okay, then I will, I'll read the resolution. Okay, um, then I will, uh, I'll read the resolution.
So, yeah, the green. I'm sorry, the Green County one is cheaper by a, a small amount of money, like ninety-five dollars. Uh, per.
Yeah, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor. To, uh, accept a quote from Green County Commercial Bank for police vehicle financing. Uh, unless, uh, a lower, uh, quote is obtained, uh, in the immediate future. And the, the mayor is authorized to sign said agreement, uh, subject to, um. Subject to a lower, a lower offer being, being obtained, in which case the lower offer and the cheaper, the cheaper.
You're authorized and you can make the choice.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I agree.
All right, the mayor is hereby authorized to accept the, uh, the, the best quote from any commercial bank or other financier. With respect to the police vehicle. Uh, I'll, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll sign.
Can. Sec, second by, yes.
Can we just clarify that, that, can we just clarify that the best quote may not necessarily be the cheapest quote? We're giving you authority to enter into the best agreement.
Well, I, I understand, Trustee Shara, but the best agreement is subject to interpretation. I mean, I, I will do my best.
Religating that interpretation to you.
Okay, now, all right, all those in favor of giving the mayor the authority as set forth above, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, okay. The next item is authorizing Deputy Clerk Denise Spaltoff to sign off on regular recurring vouchers. Those vouchers are, are police related. They are reviewed by the chief and then submitted to Denise. For her, for, uh, to sign off and, and see the payment is made. Um, the list of those vouchers includes, if anybody needs to know what they are. Acosta, American Pest Control, ABS, Campbell, Fire Protection, Lexus, Nexus, Code Red. Optimum, Orange and Rockland, Peak Powers, Ready Refresh, Real American Dry Cleaners. Safe Passage Solutions, Town to Tuxedo, Verizon, Verizon Wireless, V O I P, the telephone system and When to Work. Do anybody have any questions about this?
Just to clarify that this is in lieu of the chief.
No, no, it is not in lieu of the chief.
Oh, okay.
It, 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 but it allows the chief, allows her to sign off on them rather than pass them on to Elizabeth.
No, I think, uh, Chris is right. It is in lieu of the chief signing off on the, sign off on the.
I stand corrected. Uh, any discussion on this?
Oh, no.
I would just ask you if that's, Jared, is that legal?
These are, these vouchers will still be subject to the board's review and approval. This is just for purposes of signing off on them. I, also, is there any monetary threshold you wanna, to impose on, on this authority?
I, 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 I for one can't say I know how much these bills are. Uh, you guys have seen them, right?
Yeah, but they're all. Standard.
They are, they're regular, occurring.
Yeah.
Bill. Mo- a lot of them are monthly charges. They're not high.
So these are nominal, nominal charges, uh, yeah, okay.
Bills, electricity bills.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing to exceed five thousand dollars?
Okay, that's fair.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so be resolved that the Board of Trustees authorized Police Secretary Denise Spaltoff to sign off on vouchers from the following vendors, as I stated earlier on. Um, for bills not to exceed five thousand dollars per bill. Uh, through the end of the fiscal year. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, Elizabeth? Okay, uh, item G is tabled as was previously discussed. Uh, the next is audit of claims. Elizabeth, would you handle that, please?
Sure. I'm just noting for the record that the, uh, uh, audit of claims is as follows. The general fund. One hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-six cents. The sewer fund, twelve thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. And the water fund, twenty-one thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and eighty-two cents.
Do we have to vote on that, Elizabeth?
No, I just noted for the record.
Thank you. All right. Um, budget transfer resolution. Um, would you explain that one, Elizabeth, please?
So, yes, we were a little bit over in one of our audit line, uh, our, um. Accounting codes, uh, machine contractual, five one three oh point four. And the reason for that was that there was an unanticipated, uh, expense of about ten thousand dollars. So at this point, we're over by about two thousand something. So, um, since we're really only halfway through the year, I mean, we have to cover that anyway. Uh, so I thought, uh, we could put in maybe five thousand, which would cover. What we have used to date and give us a little bit more for the rest of the year. And as it happens, the New York State Retirement, uh, bill that we got was less than anticipated. So I thought we would take the money from there. Uh, we've already paid the bill. We're not gonna get any more. So that money is available to use elsewhere if needed.
Any questions about the overage? What caused the?
Yeah, what caused it? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. You have to ask Jeff.
Oh, okay.
Intend, DBW's intended. So I'm just saying that for the record, not for you.
Okay. All right, um, uh, Trustee Brooke, uh, took a break. Uh, let's wait till he returns, um. All right, the, the resolution is be resolved that the Board of Trustees authorized Clerk Treasurer Doherty to transfer five thousand dollars for the New York State Retirement. Uh, budget line ninety-one zero point eight to machinery contractual. Budget line fifty-one thirty point four. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Waiting for the last vote. Aye, is that an aye, Josh? Aye, okay, unanimous. All right. So, um, we now reached the point, uh, for the second, uh, public comment, starting with the room. Anybody in the room wish to, uh, make additional comments? Yes, uh, Ms. Giblin, please take the, uh, podium. Thank you.
It's more of a question than a comment. So at the last, um, meeting, there was a mention of an email that contains some. Misinformation regarding, um, future plans for the police force. And your response was that your. Plan would be forthcoming. And I'm just wondering if, if that has been publicized or published anywhere or if you'd like to address your future plans.
Yeah, I, I have, I have no plans to change the police force in any way, shape or form other than to get a new police chief. That's, that's really it. Uh, there, I, I, there's nothing else I intend to do. We got a new car, we get a new chief. Okay, sure. Um, let's talk about, uh, the people on Zoom. Um, Mr. Guazzoni appears to be the only person with his hand up, so go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to call the trustees' attention. And the trustees', um, Attorney Jared Cashow's attention, please, to this, um. Heron Cove parcel that the village owns. Uh, it's a very pretty parcel, especially at sunset. It's beautiful, uh, sunset there. Um, the village should not sell it. However, if the village does sell it, it should sell it through public auction. Uh, I myself have a standing bid for this parcel at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't think that's a lot because I think this parcel is very precious. And I think it's worth two hundred fifty or three hundred thousand dollars. So if the village were willing to sell it, it should do at public auction. Thank you for your audience.
Thank you, Mr. Guazzoni. Mr. Madden?
Mr. Guazzoni obviously has never read the village zoning code. We have a four acre residential zoning code. In the village of Tuxedo Park. The village is not authorized to, nor would any resident support. Creating a standalone lot on a fifteen by one hundred square foot, fifteen by one hundred. Foot plot of land. That's fifteen hundred square feet. It's three point four percent of an acre. It's a joke. This has previously been discredited. I have previously submitted. Uh, a lengthy legal analysis that the previous village attorney agreed with. That there's simply no basis to sell this parcel. On a standalone basis. If it's going to be sold, it can only be sold. To a neighboring property that can absorb it into a code compliant lot. New York law is very clear on that. Mr. Guazzoni can continue to gaslight. Our community with lies, but the facts and the law are clear. And I would invite the village, the new village attorney. To opine on that issue when he's ready to, because the law is very clear on this. Thank you.
Uh, I, I get to rebut here. I, I think Mr. Madden really would like to steal.
This is not the way it works, Claudio.
No, I, I think we're done with, uh, a public comment from those two gentlemen. Is there anybody else who wishes to make a comment? Any other hands raised? Okay, that closes public comment. The second round, uh, trustee comments. Any, uh, Deputy Mayor Casker?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Trustee Brooke?
None.
Trustee Shaw? Trustee Shara?
Nothing. Thank you.
That concludes, uh, public comment. I will now move. That the board leave the public meeting and enter executive session at eight forty-four P M to discuss. Um, a personnel matter and, uh, a water rates matter. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, folks. Thank you. We're gonna go into public, uh, executive session. We will resume following executive session.
Um, John?
That's right.
Uh, I would suggest you go on mute until you've cleared, um, the room, including Zoom.
Okay, we, we have no, there are no resolutions resulting from the executive session. So the final, uh, act will be, uh, a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.